Right, good evening everyone. Go ahead and start the meeting at this time. Please turn all cell phones and other devices to off. Invite me at this time please. And Mr. Bob McDaniel, would you please leave us in our prayer and place this evening, sir?
To the Father as we enter this meeting, we have to listen with understanding, to act with compassion, and to speak with restraint. And may we all exercise what we read in Matthew 28. May we all be as righteous on the inside as we are on the outside. In Christ's most precious name we pray. Amen.
Right, consider approval of the minutes of the 2017, 2018 meeting please.
I'll make a motion and accept minutes with some corrections.
Second. All papers say aye. Right, visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address accounts on any subject at this time. Is anyone present that's not on the agenda this evening? Everybody is on the agenda. Right, discuss and take action on a request from Holden. How do you say that last name? To have a benefit Street Dance for Dina King. And he's not present? You don't think about it?
Uh, Tim just took a message and said that he wanted to come to the conference to speak before we were presented.
They did give what street they were requesting? Second. All papers say aye. Alright, discuss and take action on a presentation from Mrs. Janet Wilson on the operation of the swimming pool for this committee.
You know, at the ISD there's a podium. You know, they all want things out on.
So where are you on that?
Use your imagination.
We have still districts budget.
I bring my own podium. I am planning to run the pool again this summer. I appreciated the opportunity to do that last year. The year before I complained quite a bit when I had my own children up there. And Brian being the person that he is finally said, if you'll shut up, I'll hire you if you think you can do a better job. And I agreed and took it and I really enjoyed it last year. Of course, I worked with all those kids all year long up at the school. So I've known them all since they were in beginner band in sixth grade. It was not a new thing for us to work together. And I think that is part of why it went so well last year. I was very pleased. Granted, it was my first time doing anything like that, but from my perspective, it was pretty smooth. I learned a lot about the difference in the school district and city. And it's just very different in how the operations run. And so I think that was a good learning thing for me to see how other things operate. So we've got five returning out of the 13 guards I had last summer. The other guards that are not returning either, this is like their second or third year to guard, but they have moved on to college and they're just simply not returning home. It wasn't anything, you know, that I don't want to work for her anymore, don't want to work for the city. This is about the best summer child a kid could get, particularly in Ballinger as far as pay. Granted, it comes with the responsibility of actually watching people's lives. And we took that pretty serious last summer. I did not shorthand out on the stands at all. That was one of my biggest complaints from years past was not enough guards out on the stands to appropriately watch the pool. Our pool is set up to where you've got that little area plus the very deep area. And a lot of times the year before, there could been one person to watch both sides. And no matter if you're in that stand by the deep end, if you're watching the deep, your back is to the little people. You're watching the little people, your back is to the deep end. And so I was very, very particular about that. The other thing that we really worked on last year was trying to get to our teens and to our families to try to get more of them out for the teen night and family night. I think anytime, and I feel like the city's thought process behind the pool is having to get families involved in our town over the summer. And you know, the first family night, there was about 25 families that showed up, maybe 25 people, not 25 families. The year before, that's about what it had been. Us, the Grimes, Chip, we'd bring his little boy and then a couple of other people would come with their little ones. And that's pretty much it. And then, so that was about the first family night. It was about that way last year. By the second and third, we were up to 50 to 75 people. By July, we were having anywhere from 125 to 175 people in the pool for family nights. That absolutely was just wonderful to see when you came onto the hill and people are parking all the way up to the community center and all the way back down to the RP parks. I mean, granted, I had to have almost every lifeguard around because there were so many people. We just, we had people, we had lifeguards standing all the way around just to maintain everything. It was great to see parents and grandparents and little biddies up to even high school kids were coming in with their moms and dads and little siblings. And I think anytime that the city can help, you know, make our family situations better in Ballinger, I think we're going to be better off as a community and as a school. So I was very pleased with that. By July, the pup hut had kind of started to take off a little bit better. We had very normal hours last year. We were very strict with those hours. That was one of the complaints that I had heard going into it was that the pup hut was open sometimes, not open sometimes, that snow cones were sometimes good, sometimes you just kind of wanted to put it in the trash. So the first day we went down there to look at the pup hut last year, we found out that the machines were covered in mold on the inside. The refrigerators had about an inch of mold growing all the way through them, top and bottom. And obviously, the decision was made to get new equipment. And we ran a very strict schedule down there. And I think that it started to, by July, we started to have a pretty normal, we could kind of figure out when the people were going to be there. And so we planned to do that again this year. The girl that ran that last year graduated and actually starts college in June in Dallas. And so we have hired Ben and A.J. Columbo. They're going to split the time to have the pup hut this year. I think they're going to be great for that. They'd love to talk to people. They're chatting with people. And they want just to be happy. And I think that they'll do a really great job down there. I worked with those boys since they were in sixth grade band and some know them pretty well. Moving into the new people at the pool, the girls that are going to be our new lifeguards are Lauren Landers, Kenley Bowman, Kenley Gray, Caitlin Burton, and Lexi Dammelport. And then the boys are going to be Damian Wilburn, Marcus Oliver, Cole Cave, Kate Albers, and Richard Parra. So those will be our 10 new guards this year, assuming they all pass their lifeguarding certification, which will be getting done in Brownwood this year. And we'll go as a group over there to get that done to make sure they're all getting the same certification. So I'm excited. We're going to continue the family night, continue teen night. Cancer Society came out last year. They were overwhelmed with the amount of people. So it's going to be bigger this year. And then teen night, the last teen night of the summer, we did the glow party. And I've already had kids asking, do we get to do glow sticks again this year? They had an absolute blast with it. As soon as they started to get a little hyper and start chunking the glow sticks, all the lights came on and we said, clear the pool, it's time to go home. So, you know, we had a little house of fun, but I didn't want all the glow stuff passing in our pool and things like that. So as soon as they started chunking, we just pulled them out of the pool. So anyway, they had a good time. Tammy brought out the ice cream machine for that. And the kids have a lot of ice cream machine. They don't get homemade ice cream very often. We did a adults only swim one night last year, had about 30 people show up for it. Tammy was also there for that. She brought her mixed drink machine for that. And it did not go as well as I was hoping. It's really helping to have more than 30 people. I think that is something that, it's kind of a stigma in a small town. A lot of people like to have a few beverages, but a lot of people don't like to do it in public. So I don't know, we'll have to talk about whether that's something we do this year or not. It didn't cost that much to have it open because everyone paid for the drinks. So it wasn't like we were out that money. I don't know, we'll have to discuss that, whether it was worth the time and the money. But the family night for sure is going well. We plan to have Cancer Society and Hot Dogs for them this year. Teen night, the glow sticks again, I think was a good thing. So anyway, that's where I'm at. I plan to open on the 26th. Dana Travis is going to do our swim lessons again with Shannan Collier as her assistant. And what I really enjoy, Dana's pretty tough on the kids. By the end of it, whoever her helper is can give the lessons themselves. So she normally does three weeks of lessons and the fourth week, whoever her helper has been, does the fourth week on their own with just four or five kids. And I think that's a really great thing for our high school kids to be learning is how to give people swim lessons. That's something they can do the rest of their life as a part-time job. So I think that it'll be good. Last year, Crystal Lax was my assistant. She is in a full-time job now. And so we're going to use Zach and Shannan, both, this is their third year to guard. And so we're going to use them kind of as assistants to me, head lifeguards, if you want to call it that. And that way I can still do some to and from the pool, but I'll be there 90% of the time like I was last year.
Are we still going to have early warning adults swim?
Yes. We're still planning to do adults swim from eight to 12. I've been, I was at Mines Club last week and we talked about that. And I think a lot of people just didn't know still that that was an ongoing thing and a normal thing. So if we can spread the word about that, that would be great. The people that have come up for that have really enjoyed not having a splash zone happening while they're trying to do a little bit of low-key exercise. It happens at the same time as the swim lesson. So you've got the little ones in that front area and then the adults get to use the whole rest of the pool just to walk and swim laps. And it really was nice for adults. Family passes are going again this year. Maybe when it gets a family pass, that gives them entrance into the pool anytime of open hours, whether it's the adult swim, the teen night, the family night, and it also lets them into the pup hut. It's five people on the pass. The people that took advantage of that last year got their use out of it. And halfway through the summer, people were like, damn, I should have gotten my family pass. Yeah, you should have, because when you're there every day with five or six kids, it adds up pretty quick. So I think that's about it. What questions do you all have or comments?
Just from a staffing standpoint, I think Jana did an excellent job. Her recollection of how she ended up in that job is dead on accurate. My first year here, we had two young ladies ran the pool, not very well. And that's not a reflection of them.
No, they were nice girls. They were not ready for...
They probably were just too nice. I remember it was 104 degrees one day and the pool was closed. And that was just not going to happen. The second year, we had some other issues. And so when Jana came to me and being the good Baptist that I am, when they complained, I put her in charge. But she did a great job. She takes the drama out of lifeguarding and she can crack the whip. And she's got, definitely has their attention. And I was very pleased with how it operated. It's the first time I've ever run a pool in three different cities where I received zero complaints. Well, realistic complaints. People were upset because we didn't open it, been out on time or whatever. No complaints on the lifeguards, their attitude, their professionalism, if you will. And so she does a great job and I'm glad she signed up for another year.
Oh, I know one thing I didn't talk about. The, there's a big blunt wall when you walk into the pool on your left. And so we stand at that counter all day long, we sit at that big blunt wall. And it's really boring. And so I asked if we could maybe get some kind of mural painted on it or something that says, you know, City Ballinger Pool or whatever, and maybe some fish and I don't know, just make it an interesting, fun wall for a good walk-in. I talked to our art teacher about it to see if she would be interested in doing that mural. She has four kids in her art four class and they actually have drawn up the sketches of the murals to be judged at the end of this week. And we're going to go with one of those. With her guidance, of course, she'll be the one on site doing it. And I think it's going to be really neat for the kids to know that their peers have a part in putting that together, much like the State Palace has a, is it from the class of like '95, '96, '97? That entire back wall is covered in characters in there. And I mean, people still go in, now their own kids are in there seeing what their parents did. And I think that that will be a really cool thing to have on the inside of our pool house. So anyway, appreciate it.
Any questions?
What do we need to take to approve Jana?
Yeah, essentially just to approve Jana to run the pool and operate the pool as we have been.
Second. All papers say aye.
Do you know any of the participants who are in the lifeguarding today? Formaldehyde, snow cone.
There's no good correlation between formaldehyde, snow cone, and the local.
Would you like me to look into that?
Well, we did find, we did find snow cone juice in the formaldehyde bottle.
Yes, we did.
If we do a teen night, Bob, we're looking for volunteers. One of the things we want to do is show Jaws on teen night since they've never seen Jaws. And so I'm looking for a diver to wear a fin.
You're wanting to scare the kids? I have a veteran. A standee of you and a bikini fit.
Bob, if I'm going to scare the kids, I'm just going to show them these football games from last year.
Alright, consider approval of building permits. I believe you had five. Do we have any others that come in?
I don't.
You're good? Unless you want to study.
Well, I'll go to dinner if it doesn't matter.
What time should we meet here?
One time when you have.
What time is this meeting open? Because I'll have dinner already 30 minutes before. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Have a good evening.
Okay, Tom Green, 601 Fourth Street wants to build a carport, 15 by 21 by eight foot. Jerry Prandell, 11 L. North 14, wants to build a little store sale, 20 by 20 by nine. Tom Box, AO3 North 6, wants to move to 24 by 24 by 10. This carport has actually had his back on the town. And he wants to move it back a lot by that.
He's basically just technically moving it back?
Yeah.
Won't impact the setbacks or...
No. Benjamin Barova, correct, Barova, 100. 116 North 6, wants to build a shop, a 30 by 15 by 12 foot shop. And Carlson C. Martinez, 1901 Ninth Street, wants to put up a carport, 15 by 20 foot 6 by 8 foot in the front drive.
Need to set that apart?
Yeah. Everything looks good. Everything should be okay. I'm making a motion, we need to move on to building.
Second. All papers say aye.
Do you see the plumbing deal, that big metal building down there?
Big wall?
The plumbing deal, that big metal building?
Yeah, that being, you know, right here. Oh, okay.
Right beside. Done bleach and all that stuff.
Yes, sir.
And that's way back.
Yeah. Back of the wall.
So you're just adding to it, next to it?
Yeah. Yes, sir. There's two different lots that we bought. We bought a new building for Taylor and we just wanted to hit it right there.
Okay. So I thought you'd use the other one here that you have.
No, we're going to continue with the other.
Okay, awesome.
You're going to put the business center move?
I'll put my business deal. Well, my mom and dad live up here and it just makes sense to move our business or manage what we're here. They live on Ninth Street.
Okay. Well, welcome to Ballinger.
Thank you very much. We moved to Ballinger because the water's so awesome here.
You know what? That's the first time that's ever been said. It's usually horrible when you mark the tape and try to grow a business. Mark the tape.
When you said it, I didn't think that's what you said. Were you raised here?
No, sir. I was raised in San Angelo.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Central or Lakeview?
Central and Lakeview. The vocational classes when I was at school, I had to be split between Lakeview and Angelo. So I had to be in Lakeview at 6:00 in the morning and Central at 7:30.
Oh, wow. You have a central bobcat, bear cat, whatever.
The bobcat, yeah.
Whatever they are. Are y'all the bobcats or bear cats?
Bobcats.
Blue cats?
The bobcat.
He's a central grad, we give him hard time.
Alright.
You know, you got to go if you don't want to hang out.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That's the plumbing problem.
He might be a more basic.
Is that what it is?
Alright, thank you. That's the deacon's feet.
You traveling home tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I don't know, are you...
No, we're good. Alright, discuss and take action on the RFPs received for garbage collections in the city of Ballinger. And I believe there's only two being represented this evening. And before we go ahead...
Well, I just want to give some context. We had sent the RFP out in the February 1st, part of March, something around there to put it in the, put it on our website, advertise. And we got four, and I specifically sent the four organizations that were originally applying. Texas Disposal Systems was one, Republic Waste Services, who we currently use, is two, was two, Knox Waste Services, three. And then there was a group out of Abilene, I think it's called Country?
County.
County, yeah. County Waste Service. They were interested as well. So I sent the RFP packet to those four entities and advertised. Of the four that I specifically sent out and of all the other efforts, we received three RFPs, which you have right there. We received an RFP from Texas Disposal Systems, Republic, and Knox. I also put kind of a price breakdown on some of these things for you guys as well. In the interest of full disclosure, just so you know where we are, we use Republic since 1997, I believe. And that's when we transitioned from our own collection to contracting that out. I have known Texas Disposal Systems for a number of years and I worked with Knox Waste while I was at Anson. So I've got a relationship with all three of the respondents that have come in. All three are excellent organizations and I expect nothing but the best from all three. And so in that vein, Mr. Mayor, how do you want to proceed? If anybody have any questions on background, how this happened, any other issues?
He is not.
Floor's yours, sir.
Where y'all at?
Fine. Allen.
You mind if we go ahead and start with him since he's going to travel home?
I always try to be respectful of those who travel further.
That's okay. Alright, third floor, sir.
Thank you, sir. And thank you all for your time. My name's Jay Howard, I'm with Texas Disposal Systems. And I know you all had a tight gig and had a chance to review it, so I won't go through deep detail by detail. But I did just want to talk a little bit about who we are as a company. TDS is, our headquarters is in Austin, Southeast Craps County. We have operations in Alhine, San Angelo, Austin, Georgetown, San Antonio, Seeley, Wymer, and Gilcom. So we've got a presence in a pretty big part of the state. We currently have about 40 municipalities that we partner with, another 100 or so HOAs and affiliate districts in the central Texas area. Our company was started by Bobby and Jimmy Gregory, who were originally from San Angelo. They started the company 40 years ago, still run the company, still very, very involved, as well as the second generation of Gregorys are. We built our company on a very high standard of quality and integrity. And you know, we've been able to attain relationships with cities throughout the state and keep them for long, long periods of time because they very much appreciate the way we do business, the way we take care of their customers, the way we respond on the day-to-day matters, as our guys are in the town picking up trash and recycling. So I hope to have the opportunity to do that for the city of Ballinger. Really appreciate the opportunity to bid. And at this point, I would just say if there's any questions that you have in regard to our bid, we'd like to address those.
We got notes. I think I know the answer to most of these questions. Your base rate, you start out at, what was it, 20?
27, 80.
27, 80? And then you have a guaranteed increase and there's an annual percentage increase?
Right.
Three and a half percent?
Yes, sir.
Is that based on CPI or is that based on...
No, CPI, we've got a few contracts lingering that are still based on CPI. It hasn't been a fair representation of the costs in the solid waste industry. It's a great representation of the basket of household goods, which is what it was designed to do. There are other indices that if you prefer to have it set to an index that we would consider. But most of our cities have decided just to, you know, hedge their bet and stick with the set percentage and go with theirs. Just to give you an idea of the last 20 years, the average cost increase has been about 4 or 9%. So we feel like three and a half has covered for anything unforeseen.
Okay. And y'all feel free to jump in. These are just questions asked from an operations standpoint. Tell me about your dumpsters. Are they new or are they old? They get cleaned up, they get...
They're all being new. But of course, if you saw on there, you know, I know there's some discussion about rear load, there's side load dumpsters in the alley versus carts. So in either scenario, it'd be 100% new containers throughout the city, which we did some driving around, some of those are ancient, though we have a nice bit. So yeah, those are all waste containers that you'll be wearing and getting painted and deep cleaned and ready to roll.
Bob McDaniel, over here driving there was Teresa who takes out a dumpster. What happens? Teresa would be driving, obviously.
It happens periodically. Typically, there's no way to identify how it happened and it happened where. So we just take care of it.
So you just...
It's infrequent enough, we just take care of it. We've got containers in the yard in San Angelo, we do a nice swap, a good swap.
And I apologize for interrupting one point of thing here. You'll see the 96 gallon cart, that would be what I had at my house because there was no alley. And so there's two prices on here. One is for every, essentially every residential account would be a cart that you would roll out on a given day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, whatever. You would have that cart rolled out every day or once a week. And that's your cart, that's your trash bin, and it's no one else's. The other price that you have in here is one, and the three is a three yard CY cubic yard for four households. And so that's how their bid comes in. That three yard, a three cubic yard is the big dumpster that you see in the alleys. Is that correct? The big, not the little half?
That's a one five.
Yeah, not the little midget size, but the big one. And so to make an apples-to-apples comparison of what we have now versus what these proposals are, is a three yard... is a three-yard container is primarily what we have around town. There are some yard halves, but the general rule of thumb is a three-yard. So, anyway, I just wanted to.
Something to ask. How do you reconcile twenty-seven eighty with the sixty? I'm just trying to. We've got residential side cities, twenty-seven eighty, right? And then we, okay, I'm sorry.
Perfect.
You want, yeah, a little bit?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Now, on the breakdown sheet that I have for you guys, I did not include outside, outside of town. Those are rates that we can adjust as need be. But primarily, our, our primary concern is obviously people in town. And that's where bulk of our trash collection comes from. What do y'all do for, do y'all have any efforts or any programs for illegal dumping?
Well, in some communities, it's usually a bigger problem when it's re-load dumpsters or side-load dumpsters in the alley. Just it's, folks can pull down an alley, nobody has, whether they're coming in from the county or from the neighborhood over or whatever. So for instance, in Alpine, we developed just a decal that was reflective of the city ordinance about illegal dumping that we posted on the containers. Does that make a huge difference? I mean, it really is, it's a matter of getting residents involved. They see something, ask some questions, it's, you know, businesses, they have a, when they're paying full cost of the container, there, a lot of businesses will put in cameras or at least the thread of camera. But.
Y'all have a lot situation or?
Lot. You can install lock bars, which you grab, grab the actuated bar. For businesses, it's not a bad idea. It's, it would make sense.
Some of our bigger businesses would probably, would probably want that.
Okay.
Brian, I notice that the show, the project, you know, those are pretty big customers calling the way you're shooting.
Yes, sir.
They're not presented in these summaries, are they?
You're talking about the, one of the things I want to just discuss with you guys after the fact, you know, and Bobby brings it up now, is we have about eleven different commercial accounts. We have one three-yard container picked up one time a week, two three-yard containers picked up three times a week. All the proposals that we have would streamline those things. So there'll be some decisions for businesses to be made. One of the things I want to ask you and I'll end up asking y'all at some point, BI, Ballenger ISD has eleven containers. Need to be picked up, what, four times a week? Is that right, Bill?
Yes.
Y'all, how do you price that? Do you just price it, the price of one container, four times a week, times eleven?
Typically so, but it's a little bit of an exception to the rules, so we can look at it. I mean, because the truth of the matter is, the trip cost is the same.
Yeah.
So it's kind of hard on a price matrix to put the number of containers. So you kind of have to do that on a one-on-one basis.
Same thing with the housing project. I think housing projects actually have eleven. Yeah, but they have eleven containers as well. And so there's, it's hard for these guys to price those things. And that was something I wanted to let you brief the ducks on, so I'm going to ask everybody is, how do you, the rule of thumb would be eleven times one times three?
Say it again?
Eleven, eleven three-yard containers.
Yeah.
Whatever the price is for that amount, you know.
Yeah, the rule, I mean, for instance, if it was a convenience store that had five containers outside, it's going to be this rate. I mean, because there's just really no way to gauge multiple cans in a matrix. But I'm an after-school, I'm just saying we'd be glad to look at it and figure, figure something out that we're all agreeing on.
We might be looking more containers in less time.
And there's not, almost going to be a problem that dump it for one July.
Typically, the schools will put them on, some of the, where different, couple of them maybe, just for whatever activities are going on on campus, but they won't put them on. And the frequency is probably pretty important with the school because of all the food waste coming from the cafeteria, that may not, I want to say enough to keep it off that.
Any questions, Eli?
Sure, there's skin out of shoes, it's out of shoes. What do you charge for a commercial three-yard dumpster one time a week?
A three-yard one time would be sixty dollars per month.
Brian has somebody as well.
Okay.
He has a seventy-five. And I think there's some other descriptions.
Commercial three-yard one time a week?
Yeah.
Like the commercial four-yard one time a week in your booklet you have, seventy-nine, eighty. Yes, ninety-nine, seventy-five. It's seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, eighty is right.
What I did, Bobby, on that?
Outside of the city?
I did outside the city.
Yep, that's right.
I did outside, you're correct, Bobby, and I apologize for that.
I didn't infer it, you though.
Yes, yes. So just for the record, just for the tally books, three-yard one time a week is how much?
Here, one time is sixty.
Sixty, two times?
One time.
Okay.
And you're also incorrect on the one and a half, Brian.
On the commercial?
And also the ninety-six gallon.
Yeah, let me do everything out in town.
It's literally, you know, two minutes, if you're Brian, or all of these.
Those are the two minutes, most of, just years?
Yes, yes. I apologize for that, counsel. Two twenty-five, so you're three-yard, three times a week?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, yeah, 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 I'm just looking at it right now.
The one point five, that comes at forty.
Yeah.
Volume and tax, obviously.
Bobby, is there a particular rate you'd like for me to adjust, three and a half percent on every year? Anyway? Given these new numbers?
You can.
Is there a particular one?
The three yards, I want to offer up.
Yeah.
What are the dumpster dumpsters?
Dump behind me, Bobby, behind me. Twenty-seven, eighty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. What's size of the dumpster? As a three-yard?
Three-yard, yeah.
So picking that one in would be what?
Um, maybe it'd be three-yard.
You're looking at it.
Three times a week, I guess, is what they do now.
Which use your eyes?
Out of ten.
Sixty-two, ten in year two. Sixty-four, twenty-seven in year three. Sixty-six, fifty-two in year four. Sixty-eight, eighty-five in year five.
In what time, Brian?
Sir?
At the end of what time?
At the end of year five, a three-yard container getting picked up.
Was started at, and you did what?
Started at sixty and ended at sixty-eight, eighty-five. I apologize to you for that as well.
This is your problem.
I'm looking at outside. But everything residential inside the city is at twenty-seven eighty, is that correct?
Yeah.
While you're, while you're going over that, I want to tell you some advantages and disadvantages. The cart obviously provides convenience and cuts down on illegal dumping. The disadvantages are, are, some of our residents will tell you they cannot push that cart out to the curb.
But don't you have handicap placards you should build up?
I was going to say, if it's, we kind of rely on our cities to vet that for us, but if it's a handicap ledge, well, you punk side serves, yeah.
Yes, that's what it is with that. The second thing, and I cannot stress this enough, because I've seen this firsthand in Anson, and you can see it firsthand here, the garbage trucks put a tremendous amount of weight on the side of that street. And in Anson, for example, they had car side or curb side, you know, pickup. And the streets were completely eroded after about three years. Because that garbage truck, just the weight constantly coming in, will dramatically increase the, the lap standing back of that street.
So what are your rules? We've already saw that. FPA, FPA.
If you do the, better for everyone, it's bags, but we don't, we don't specify. I mean, if it were cart service, for instance, if you know about it, your cart is kind of nasty, you're going to have to clean it out. Absolutely.
What about?
Truthfully. That's fine too, as long as they fit in the cart and when it tips, they come out. We've had situations where people packed so much brush in there that you couldn't even get it out of a container, but that's rare.
I'm glad to hear you say that, because Republic, they're real good at that. They've spoiled a lot of us.
Anything else? You good?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You.
You awake?
I am.
Alright, next up is Knox Waste, please.
Thanks for having us again. My name's Matt Knox. Mrs. Charles Cranton, he's got our Ray and Man. Family business. For those of you that don't know us, we're a family business. My mom, my dad, and I are one of our operators. I do feel more operating and owning, but a lot of what TDS does, there's a lot of the same guidelines on the questions you're going to ask. They're going to end up being very similar in answers, but I'll answer them, of course. But what we stand on, I'm not a good public speaker, I don't know. But it's what we do. I hope everybody had a chance to call the city's empty service, Brian, and I'll let you know what we did announce, and I hope. We stand up now, more than anything, more than any speech that we give ourselves. The cities that we service typically settle with us. Because if there's any issues, but they get resolved right away, we communicate with the city's empty service, make sure that if there's a dumpster that got run over by somebody. Yeah, somewhere run over, that was served, taken care of immediately. As far as the pricing goes, what we see, the prices are stable for long periods of time. And I'd say something like the other cities that we contract with, there's probably twenty right now. They would back that up. But our, we don't have a set rate increase at any point. And if we do, I mean, it's rare that it happens, it's based solely on what happens in our business in that time, so insurance, fuel, things like that. But we would come to you and know it by you and get your blessing if there are rewards. But that's very rare that it happens. There's any questions? I can answer them. I'd be happy.
Where do you, where will you take the trash?
Highway and right down to Landville.
What's the round trip or west? What's the trip mileage from?
When I say it, to Landville, it's probably about seventy miles. You'd be getting all in the container, polygards or dumpsters, whatever. You decide whichever direction you go. We, Brian, we do have a crew, you know, four years from now, four years from now, when everybody starts looking shady, they'll, we've got a crew that goes around and keeps some, either pan, fix lids, replace if necessary. You're not going to see any ragged dumpsters out there, not for very long. Not, we get a call from the city, we'll replace it, fix it, pan it. Typically, it won't be to that point. We'll make a decision before then because we don't want our containers open already.
So Matt, there's list of clients, clients here goes beyond that.
As far as the city's own?
Yeah. These are not your only clients.
Well, we have about twenty city contracts, and then we've got many residential that are all.
Okay.
So, yeah, so the answer is?
So it goes beyond this?
Yeah.
Anson, the Woodson?
Yeah, this would be probably more accurate.
Yeah, we have that.
Yeah, that would be.
So Matt, on your website, you've got twenty-eight other cities listed that are not a business.
Small areas that we, that we serve, that were around like Breckenridge, where the New York City, so is Breckenridge.
Rule, Snyder, Rosco. Those are, are they?
Yeah, we're all over on the outside of.
Are they your present client?
No, Snyder is not. Rule is, Rosco is.
Okay, because you list twenty-eight besides this, or not, that you list?
Yeah, these are areas that we cover, surrounding area. We're not, you know, just like, you know. We're not in the city of Flag, but we service outside of Flag.
Okay.
Yeah. Matter of fact, we've got some polyguards just outside of town, too.
And these letters are very close that you have in the faculty here.
Yeah.
One of them goes back seven years. Does that still stand?
Yeah, that's what I hope is, we can try to get you some updated ones or feel free to call. I believe we got four of them just for every one of the cities that we have a contract with. So feel free to call them now.
But as soon as it goes back seven years, one of the letters reference?
Yeah.
Is not on this list. Is not on this list.
Oh, that's the, no.
Rosco.
Oh, should be.
There it is.
That's okay. But, yeah, I do encourage you, call if, if you have them, to call them. So they're going to give you the straight look for how we approach our business and how we handle it, from pricing to any issues or what the city needs. So they're going to make sure that you take care of them. And they can attest to that, you know, I can tell you a lot, a lot of people that are very, more wonderful, but I truly feel that our cities are going to tell you that, maybe when they have. Brian's worked with us before, and I don't know if he would be one to ask questions to, I guess, as far as how we operate.
So Matt, as a footnote to my previous.
Sure.
Presenting my question. I notice on your website, you say you have a bunch of residential, a bunch of combines in four-foot sections. You have to bag all of your trash.
No, that's preferred.
It's not mandated?
No, it's not mandated, no. No, that's preferred, like he said, it's better for everybody.
You bet.
If you bag it, because if you got stones, stuff, some loose paper, you're dumping that trash, the wind takes it, it ends up all over the neighborhood. Ends up laying on your, so.
So it.
So it just works out better for everybody if you have your trash bag.
And I understand, you know, from the truck's standpoint, you know, rocks and dirt and through that And I understand, you know, from the truck's standpoint, you know, rocks and dirt and through that, the truck, truck.
Yeah, it is.
Comodes and things like that.
Yeah.
But at the same time, I lived in Antana, you know, those dumpsters are filled with pallets sometimes, and half filled. Construction debris, or tear down a building right out of the cars that we station, a lot of dumpsters are filled with load debris. So what would you do about that?
We would contact the city, and explain to them what we're not getting, and how much it was, it was loaded with pallets. But the city, you know, you got a dumpster full of pallets, and...
You wouldn't empty it?
Not, not a full dumpster.
So, behind me, a few months ago, there's a huge metal desk stuffed about four feet under the steering, at the top of the dumpster. I talked to the driver, and he was kind of ponderous, and he said, "Here's the offender's name, here's the offender's address, go talk to the city hall." And the next dump cycle, he emptied that desk in his truck. So I don't have that developed.
Yeah, I don't either.
To me, that's an omen.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it would be something that you would, that we would talk to city hall.
And that's what I suggested do.
Yeah. We've run everything through the city, we get our marching orders from the city. If there's going up, there's, if we have a problem, desk, big desk, stuff too full, here's what's going on. Cities is, well, we'll take care of it, or can you take care of it this one time, and we'll move on.
But Matt, from a business, from owning a truck standpoint, that's what I'm saying, Republic is pretty spoiled a lot of people. Probably take care of these things without saying much. Now, I'm not saying it's right, you know, I'm not saying that, but they've really been, from my experience, and I called a bunch of people today, and they were praising Republic, certainly, I'm just making a statement.
Right.
But they've been real generous with what they've done, of course. And I'm just making a statement, from a personal statement.
Right. No, me, without, that's kinda what we try to do with the city, with the customers.
That you would not have dumped that.
No, not just where you're from, we would not, we would go down to the city.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
One for that, and from the city.
I wouldn't either, man.
We'll do it one time, but we're not gonna continue to do it, or things will happen, or it's on communication with the city. And with the city, with the customers, or with residents.
And one last question. You're kinda open-ended on this eighteen-month firm price, but then after that, you can do what?
It's not waived forever, I mean, that's the way we...
Okay, but what is your average annual percentage increase after that eighteen-month?
We have not had price increases in any cities here for, I'm gonna say, three, four years.
Really?
Yeah. And you call them, you know, again, that's getting on the horn of a visiting with them, finding that out, because we just don't have increases unless there is some drastic increase at Landville, a drastic increase in insurance, or labor costs, fuel, and up, them sorts of things. And there hasn't been. Therefore, we haven't had, I mean, we either, we try to run our business as efficiently as possible, and while we grow, you know, pay the attention, we want people to agree with our plan.
But these three percent increases that the other companies provide, or what is it? You couldn't be committed to that, could you, after the eighteen-month?
What's that?
The three percent increase in rates.
I think the one time that we've had one, it's been a one percent raise, and that's four years ago.
And how much is it? I'm gonna say... It might have been Seymour, might have been Seymour.
Well, the question that comes, let's say, if we wanted to negotiate something in the contract, which cap? Just to make a comment. Something could happen, and you come back with a ten percent increase, and then all of a sudden, I'm not saying you have a one...
Right.
I'm just saying, from a legal standpoint, we'd have to have some kind of cap on there to say, you know, any increases to be negotiated with the city, and not to exceed whatever.
Three percent.
Right, and within that, everything is brought to city council.
Yeah.
And, you know, approved, and we would explain why, if we came in asking for ten percent, saying, well, it's fuel, and fuel hasn't gone up, or, you know, we would have a reason for that. We wouldn't come in with the increase.
I think just from a... Yeah, we would have gotten that in writing, if we wanted more.
Any more questions from Matt?
If you want to ask, there's my school district though.
Same.
Same process, school district?
Yeah, basically, be the same.
What, eleven cars?
We can work, come up with a different price for that, like he says, to come up with a price schedule for ten cans, three times a week, or four times, and stuff to put off in there, but, but, yeah.
Anything else?
Again, thanks for that one.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
So, what do you do at your best?
Excuse me? Well, I just got done with the fleet walk, and just realized I still have my hair, so...
I realize, how could you not realize?
I figured you could see me. I figured you could see that.
Yeah, that's true. Oh, yeah.
Good.
No.
Good, that's good.
Good evening.
I'm Ray Brooks, General Manager, General Manager for Republic Services. We've had the privilege of being President of Bounder for twenty years, since ninety-seven. Our driver, Alfred Snackley, is, you got one of the best here, he's been with us twenty years. And one of the things we pride ourselves in is employee engagement, and low turnover. And Jason is a testament to that, he goes above and beyond every day. You know, I know Brian came in, we've had some, several meetings discussing the verbiage in the contract, and that it was antiquated, that's kinda why we're here today, with bids. We feel we've got a really competitive bid for you guys. Answering any questions that you may have, we gave you three options in pricing. The bids approved to our P is pretty straightforward, right, so shared residential containers, or poly carts. The third option we provided is as-is, which is a better ratio, you have more cans currently than what the typical ratio is, that is standard for shared residential containers. There's about a hundred and twenty more three yards than your standard ratios. So we provided you a rate to just keep everything as it is, and redo the contract language, obviously, where, you know, rates, billing.
That contract's gonna go away.
Yeah. So, you know, this accomplishes that, gets, cleans it up, right, and that was the biggest issue, is it just wasn't clean. And we all agreed with that, it was, we actually reduced some containers, even to the current ratio. You can imagine, we reduced about a hundred and something containers on top of that. So, you know, twenty years, we had a vendor locally that was doing all the repairs and movements, and, you know, it was a leak at the back door, right? So, there was a whole bunch more additional containers, and we should have been working with the city to work through that transition, and, you know, that's what we wanted to do. Give you a rate, as-is, clean up the contract, and make it durable for you guys.
Option, just clarification, option two, with a monthly rate of ninety, or either one and a half, or shared three yards, fifteen, seventy-five?
Yes, that's the as-is.
Now, when I put that in your sheet, that's one, that's the direct correlation of what we have right now.
Don't change anything. The only thing that would change is your roll rock.
Yeah, but residential, that's your app, that's app.
Start, as soon as the contract's executed, I'm gonna start that right.
Because there's two different rates in there, I want to clarify that. They have option one of twelve seventy-five, and then option two of fifteen seventy-five. And I put option two in your comparison sheet over here, because that's the price for the current level of service that we have. Can you explain the differences between twelve seventy-five and fifteen seventy-five, for the service standpoint?
Sure. So, when you look at a ratio, when you look at shared commercial containers, or shared residential containers, you typically, on a ratio, is two homes to a yard and a half, which is one of the smaller ones, and four homes to a three yard. Currently, it's two point seven homes to a three yard, right? So you have about a hundred and twenty additional three yards, or three hundred and sixty yards additional service every week, right? So every week, we're dumping, that's three hundred and sixty yards additional capacity for the city.
So this is even after you said y'all came in and right-sized and reduced the cans?
Correct.
Why did you do that?
Why, did we leave it?
Yes, when you argued for three meetings to get the right size done.
We did, we got what we needed to do to be whole, right? And that was, that was the, when we came in, and there was two hundred and something containers, we sized down to where the margins were good, and minimized the impact to the residents, right? So that was the biggest thing, there was still an impact. But had we pulled all those containers out, and that's what we wanted, was, once we started to look at it, we realized that, we put the pieces and connect the dots where the containers were being fixed and sent out into the field, and we never do, and the rates weren't adjusted appropriately. Once we realized that, we worked with the city, said, "We gotta pull enough back where we're ready to hold." Because the lifts, the disposal, all that extra capacity was killing us. And so we did what we needed to do, and we were happy, and we moved on, we were good. We corrected some of the billing based on collections versus what was billed, we trued that up, and that was, that kept us whole where we needed to be. So that's why we want this ratio, we think it's, minimizes the impact to the city. Little change for the resident, which change can be hard for a community sometimes, as you know. We felt that's a good option for you guys.
And you have a page, tab four, thirty forty, a fixed rate increase of three percent, or we can do the pure lumber statistics, garbage and collection, traction decks, not sixty-four percent.
Right.
You know, it's a little spreadsheet that I put, I just went with the three percent, just for comparison.
And you can choose a variable, which, it may be one percent one year, maybe six percent for the next, we'll cap it at the four. How's it been over the last few years? Well, probably the exception, the last two years, it was a little bit below two percent, but I think for the last five, it's been averaging about two and a half, if I remember correctly. Very close to that. The, you know, our increases go up, just like the cities go up, right? So we, you know, we get paid, annual pay increase, that's what helps us keep our people. We pay for the right people. Parts go up, insurance goes up, everything else goes up, so...
What about tipping fees? Where y'all, y'all go to San Angelo?
It's built in, so that's...
But y'all go to San Angelo?
We do, right. Yeah, we own the Abilene landfill, but we operate the San Angelo landfill, it's a life of site lease. So we own both, two landfills.
But you know, you, for clarification, they own the, the city of Abilene's landfill, and there's another one, about, what, ten miles down the road from that?
I'd run it through, yeah. Sheriff Cansler.
It seems like, so there's actually two landfills in Abilene, one's in Republic, and the other's owned by...
Abilene Environmental.
Yeah, who's the guy?
The guy's runals. And they had roads, and Royal Home.
They have family here. That's an interesting story, right?
Yes, yeah, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of backstories.
I just wanted to clarify that, that if they went to Abilene, you'd go to choose one of them. Which at least the one in San Angelo where our trash would get processed.
Yes, that is where this is designed to go. That one has eighteen years of life, right? So the idea is, it'll expand, right? But, you know, we own the city, the Abilene landfill, we've had it since nineteen eighty-two, and it's got three hundred years of life left, right? So even the Abilene Environmental doesn't have near the life expectancy of that, right? Boundary's not going away, right? So when you look at a provider that has the assets in the market, you're the only ones that have that type of asset in the market. Even though your trash today wouldn't go there, should anything, rain, sleet, or snow happen, we own it, we own that landfill.
Talk to me about how tipping fees impact price.
So if built into, there is a fixed two point seven five percent built in the city ordinance in San Angelo, right? So that is, that is baked in there as well, right? So the garbage, the garbage trash, but two point seven five, based on your disposal, isn't your revenue, right? That's why it's not, it's not two point seven five and three, two point seven five percent on your disposal, we put the cap to fix, or the fixed three percent for all the other variables.
But San Angelo, their ordinance allows a two point seven?
Fixed, two point seven five.
Okay, two thirds per San Angelo, every year?
Correct.
And when did they pass that ordinance?
Twenty fourteen.
Okay.
Who owns the Angela?
City owns it.
So the city owns the permit, but we actually, in twenty fourteen, it's considered an acquisition because it's a life of site, right? So they set the rate, and we pay them fees, just like we pay Royal Home, steel fees and that. So it's kind of an agreement, a life of site agreement, so we do operate, we're fully responsible for the environmental liability and the operations of that infill. Closure, post-closure.
Twenty years left on that?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yeah. They'll extend, they'll extend, right? They have property north of that.
Oh, no.
Yeah, right? So they'll get expansion permits, but, you know, if environmental regulations change, and they're already talking about putting a moratorium on expansions and new permits, that would directly impact their plans, right? So, you know, that would impact a lot of people wanting to stay, but you never know how those things happen, right? So you could be kicking a football down the field, and then things change, and you run out of lives, you know, that you need an alternative disposal site, right? So we have that back up. Love being a part of a Bounder, you know, Bearcats, wife, wife born and raised, got married about a pasture here, so got a lot of roots here in Bounder, feel like definitely a part of the family, hope y'all feel the same. Got one of our best drivers, we would not change that, put a new truck in his hands two years ago. And as you just mentioned, complete blocks maintenance, you know, we have our own maintenance program that is kind of state-of-the-art, we really throw a lot of incentive, starts with the top. I put my hands on the truck once a week, so, you know, we, we have a lot of reliability and durability in our service, and nothing will change there.
I will say this, from a staffing standpoint, your driver is excellent.
Yep.
Even when we've had some intense discussions, your driver was flawless.
Yep.
And I want counsel to know that I, me, Melissa, our staff has been very pleased with their driver. He's very responsive, maybe to fault, but he's been very responsive to our needs.
Any other questions?
Ryan, this is just a logistical, this is a logistical point, and it's on the other, in front of it. Here, we were to change providers, what's the logistics in changing those?
That is, that would probably be a conversation, in fact, it would be a conversation we would have with either TDS or Knox. The way I see that working in my mind is, this contract expires on August thirty-first or August first?
That's correct.
August thirty-first. This contract would expire August thirty-first. We would, we've already notified them the current contract expires, and that's how we got here. We would work with Republic to transition their dumpsters out, and then the new vendor to transition their new dumpsters in. I would like to see overlap, where we would almost have, we would pay, we can't pay, you know, two for one for a week or two, but I'd like to see some overlap. What I do not want to see, what I do not anticipate, and what would get any new relationship off to a horrible start, is they pull out, and no one has dumpsters coming back in. At that point, we are gonna put the counsel on the back of the dump truck, and... But I would, I would like to see an overlap.
There's a gentrification in that.
Honestly, the conversations that we have in our profession, this right here, just, and y'all all know this, I mean, I'm not telling these guys anything they don't know, this is what keeps guys like me up at night.
Hear me out.
Because I can, I can shake them, you know? I can handle running over dogs, and I can handle, if the water goes out, we can fix those problems. If there's no dumpsters out there, trash, I'm gonna hear it, Nixon's gonna hear it, Stan's gonna hear it, and y'all are definitely gonna hear it. So, this is, this is the not-near scenario for guys like me. It's equivalent to you running out metal. It's equivalent to you running out metal.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other comments?
No, appreciate everything you'll do for us and look forward to continuing our relationship.
So, thank you, thank you.
So Sam's still kind of having a little battle with him, like, right at the dumpster. He had that question, we should buy him that shit.
Yes, sir. Um, all their proposals had citywide cleanups, which we took, we did because we had a recycling center, um, most cities. You, you have one or the other.
They don't give, they were manual.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but we took, we have a recycling center, so citywide cleanups.
Okay.
While they sound really great, um, and just for the record, they sound awesome. What happens is, uh, if Boundary's different, see, correct me if I'm wrong, we end up doing all the work on Saturday.
Uh, actually.
Um, their, their version of citywide cleanup is moving their junk from the front door to the, or, okay, and we go pick it up. I will say, uh, the citywide cleanup and, and Knox waste, to their credit, I don't know how they did it, but I made the, uh, huge mistake of putting twelve roll-off dumpsters out on a vacant lot in the city. And we did not monitor those dumpsters overnight. And so when we got there at seven o'clock in the morning for the citywide donut, donut, donut cleanup.
Where do you work?
Six of those dumpsters were full of tires.
Oh.
All full of tires and, um.
Don't talk to us about tires.
Yeah.
We have a lot.
We have a quite a lot of them.
And so that was, that was an interesting situation.
Building this.
You're still here.
You didn't think I'd make it through three years?
Yeah.
Well, that's comforting, yeah. We have a couple of options. Uh, clearly there's more discussion if, if you want to have it. Um, you can make a motion right now to make a decision, um, where you can take it and contemplate and think on what you want to do. The, uh, I, I will say this and Ray Knox has cast a, a dark cloud over this, but if, if your contract expires August thirty first, I'm assuming you're going to want to know if ASAP, correct? If, if we go with TDS, you're going to want to know.
I think everybody would be, the further advanced you'd get was better for everybody.
Because, well, and from their standpoint, they're going to have to order X amount of dumpsters and containers. And so that's, I would say that we need to have a decision made, a firm decision made no later than mid-June that gives y'all almost two and a half months to order containers, get containers, transition out. Should that be the case, I don't want to, I don't want to assume that, that, um, or we make a decision this evening and, uh, and we run down the road.
Right, I refuse, I still feel a little, cause I'm not ready.
I think we need to wait. I mean, we, we can make it by the end of May.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, we got another meeting on the fifteenth.
We meet, we meet on the fifteenth and then even then, again, we still meet June third, is that what it is?
Well, I, I expect we can do it by the fifteenth. I mean, that's just two weeks, so.
Right, in fact, in fact.
All right, motion accepted?
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
I want to pay you say ah. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
That's thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, be careful at home.
Appreciate it.
Joe?
Just first. I am, I'm.
She's a good woman.
Yes, she is. I don't know how I would have done half of my first kid. She came as house of us for a Jewish deputy.
Yeah.
Girl?
Girl.
We're like, oh.
I know, I told them, I know, I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks for the time.
Need to sign it?
All right.
Not getting out of here with that money. Right there, get it.
Question here?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm saying.
I don't know.
Here.
Yeah.
Yes, I. Well, they were presenting themselves. They're like, John. Well, she is getting her names, so they can, like, she has to get them on the, the minutes. Like a fool from the way.
Yeah, of course, you do again. Yeah, I do. We don't go until fifteen.
Sorry, Matt.
What do you? He's doing what?
They're already cooking, they're already cooking.
New coach? You already have a new coach?
Well, beginning Monday's morning.
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
What is, Chuck Lipsy for Brady? From where?
Brady.
Oh.
What you said.
Um, before we get to, well, go ahead and blow up that. How's that? Is that okay?
Yes.
Everybody good? We're ready to go? Is recess over?
Will you have to reach there?
Break?
I was about to have kidney failure.
All right. Here the city managers by the, we'd meet report, please.
Okay, uh, before I get into that, I want to apologize again for the mistake on Texas exposed system, knowing commercial rates. Um, thank you for bringing that to my attention, Bob, and I, I apologize commensurate.
Man, you really did miss.
I bet you did. You're kind of straight. A couple of things, um, I didn't want to, and this is part of the report, so we're not violating anything here. Um, our contract is completely antiquated. Um, it's a twenty-year-old contract, it's based off of collections. We pay roughly thirty-eight thousand to change our, uh, to Republic every month. This would drastically, um, alter that. The reason I focus so much on residential is that's where our primary revenue stream comes from. We have one thousand three hundred sixty-one residential accounts as of Friday afternoon. We charge twenty dollars and fifty cents per residential account. So if you take the difference, say eight dollars on Knox, um, that would be a, a increase of revenues of about a hundred and ten thousand or more. Um, and that's just inside town.
So that actually kind of borderline executive session?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm just pointing out facts. This is city manager report.
Okay.
All I told you so far is what we spend on garbage every month. And what Knox's process is as an example of that this contract's going to alter.
We're discussing contract?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm discussing that the contract's going to be altered.
Okay.
As a matter of how we function moving forward. Um, we have a, um, so getting on with the other part of the report. There is a situation over on McCarver, not my house. Um, you know where McCarver comes in and turns into that little drive and then he goes up one block over by Bonita's house? Does Curtis Jennings live over there?
Mm-hmm.
He walked into the house over there.
It's a problem.
Okay. Um, if you, if you go down Third Street, you'll see that we have got that block off. Um, if you go in front of Peggy Five Ashes' house, you'll see where there's a depression. And, and we know where the depression's coming from, it's coming from the garbage truck. Um, there's also moisture there. The reason we are concerned is that there are no water lines over there.
But you know.
No, we dug, yeah. Um, we thought the sewer line might be leaking, so we dug that, that alley up, uh, along McCarver Drive. Um, the sewer line is not leaking. Now, we're going to replace the manhole, we're going to replace the sewer line since we got it up. But, um, our fear, our concern, or curiosity, is that, that the way Scotty has explained it to me, um, we're seeping water. And I guess you, y'all understood the concept of what he's talking about. Um, we don't know what's causing it and we're just now getting into it. But I wanted you to know that anything over where I live, um, that hillside's probably seeping some water.
You think that's an underground?
Spring perhaps, cavern?
Yeah, because that hill used to do that all the time.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, if you, when I see you run over by it all the time, right in front of Peggy, right in front of Peggy Five Ashes, where she rolls that cart out, we, we patched it and it sunk within a matter of days. And I don't mean just a little natural, it, it sunk. Um, we cut it open and it was full of water and stayed full of water. So, um, that is something that we're monitoring. If y'all hear complaints or see things, that, that we're trying to figure that, those things out. Um, we had a whole truck break down today in front of Leaky.
Yeah, Leaky.
Uh, otherwise known as Garner State Park. It was hauling material back through the valley and so I don't know the damage on that. Found out about three o'clock today. Um, so we will, uh, we'll be fixing that. Um, there is a number of, um, trainings from TML that I plan on attending in the month of June, just for a heads up. One of the things is a legislative wrap-up, uh, on June thirty. There's a number of measures, um, that have, that fortunately did not make it out of committee last week, but still could be. That would daily impact cities. Um, and so, uh, I'll, uh, when I get registered, finalize those things, I'll let y'all know, but I'm going to be gone. To that and probably the Texas City Manager Association Conference, um, June twenty-second, twenty-third and twenty-fourth. It's in Austin, Texas. Um, other than that, uh, you don't have your budget in front of you. We ran the report this morning. Preliminary looked, the numbers looked good, uh, the numbers were good. And so we'll, uh, we'll hand that report for you guys on May fifteenth along with Stan's report of how we had. We had the ethnic festival this past weekend. I have not had a chance to visit with Hammy about, um, about attendance or any of those other numbers. I would assume because of the weather, attendance took some sort of a hit. Um, I have not had a chance to talk to Stan Bickel about Little Star Market, about how his, uh, admit was. I will tell you at one-thirty Saturday afternoon, every restaurant panel was full. I tried to go eat and everything was full. So I know that we, um, even the new barbecue place was full. I think my recommendation on Friday night definitely weighed in on that, uh, decision. You laugh, Bob.
And Becky Ferguson.
I didn't see Becky Ferguson right now, but she had a picture. I just saw yours.
Good. And the co-inventor, the proprietor, some real nice, uh, city family owns from my end right here.
Yeah.
You know, you know.
No, I'm not, I'm right there.
Did you mark that?
It's pretty good.
Um, so that's my report. Any questions, comments or concerns?
Okay.
Um, one last thing and I, I want to kind of defer to Stan, I think we're going to be bringing Julie Parsons on full-time as the animal control officer. She was the lady that she met last time. Um, I think we've worked through some things and so we will bring her on full-time, full benefits. Um, and, uh, we look forward to, she's done a great job, we look forward to continue working with her.
Good.
That's a good one. All right. All right, here we go, Chris, for future agenda items from city councils. Anybody have anything else to get on the agenda, please?
I have something that I'd like y'all to think about, give something to think about here. I was in the park the other day and I counted, we have thirty-nine concrete picnic tables. Twenty-one of which needs to be replaced or repaired.
Lots.
And nearly every tree down there needs to be trimmed. They're, they're hitting in pretty bad shit. And we have about six or seven, seven, I think, that's, uh, dying. And, uh, so little concrete, little picnic table, some of them are dangerous.
Yep.
I don't know if anything that we can do with them or, or what, just something that we all think about in the future.
Somebody was, I don't know, was lying to road or years ago, actually, maybe the benches in, on some of them, that the benches had fallen or the left.
Yeah, I did that, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and some of them are below grade. When it rains, you know, they stand and pour the water.
Yeah.
It, uh, it, it could look bad.
Well, what's the suggestion for replace or repair them? I mean, you can't just.
Well, you know, we, we have about fourteen at the community center, there's probably never you.
The ones up there in the deck or the patio?
Yeah.
Other than the vents?
Well, and even that advanced part, anybody ever use them?
Yeah.
You know, we'd leave two or three up there, you know.
How many do we have, commission?
I, I, I believe there's sixteen.
Sixteen total? What does it cost? Six or eight, I can't remember.
I think a little less than a thousand, I don't, I don't.
How much?
Totally like ten thousand.
For all of them?
All right.
Aren't they each in the structure? No?
Problem is, that metal, we, we look at replacing the metal, they get so hot with summer.
Yeah. Well, they're covered, you know, they're covered in some, uh, and also, you know, a bunch of it be in shape. Uh, but, you know, kind of the suggestion would be, if we take the old tables out, build it up, pour eight by eight or ten, ten slabs of bar. Some of them are, are, some of them are that way now.
Right, but some of them don't have the slab and that's why they're sinking, right?
Yeah.
And they're got water and dirt and everything else building up, so they're just going under.
Build up.
Hey, you gotta keep moving your feet and sit down.
You do that here.
But.
Okay.
You know, like I said, just wanted to give something to think about and what we might look at in the future. The trees, uh, really do need some attention, you know, so.
Can city person alter those trees or can we do any tests?
There, there's a couple of us could.
I would.
You know, but.
I would suggest that we just get your way, uh, to do it, um.
Make your money.
Uh-huh.
Call it out.
Well, for anybody else, we, we could do it.
Can't do it?
Huh?
She need to push, can't do it?
Claude actually started doing it last year on a lot of the stuff, but he's just him and one other person. So he has it, where he periodically just goes through and he picks out four or five trees and they go and prep. They pile it up and then they go on to other stuff, but he's been trying to, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of work down there for two.
Yeah, you gotta have, you know, you gotta have a lift.
Yep. He's using a pole saw and they'll get in the back of the pickup, but yeah.
Yeah, and that's not.
Yeah. He doesn't get in the back of the pickup that much, unless Brad do.
We don't have a, right? We don't have a lift.
Uh, we got a Skytrack.
Skytrack.
We talked about a lift, but they didn't get there.
Skytrack and a pole saw, you would get, that's.
But Skytrack.
Like I say, you know, there's a couple of them to do it, uh, but having the time.
Yep.
You know.
What would you think of that?
Because there, you know, there's a hundred and some odd concrete there.
Yeah, gotta be.
You know, and.
It, it would take a good week of the street department essentially doing that.
Oh, I don't think you'd do it in four or five months.
Well.
You know, it, it'd take a while.
But is this the time yet to do it or have we already passed that?
No, actually it is, it is for, for a lot of those trees because when they don't have leaves, you can't really fill a lot.
Was dead or alive?
Well, I guess that's true.
Yeah. And right now you can shape them, you know, and you got it, you can shape them and work with them a little bit.
Now what's hanging down to look?
Well. And like you said, you got dead limbs, live limbs, give it a few dead stuff and then the trees thrive.
There was a lot of campers down there in the park this past weekend, tents, lots of tents.
Does that clear that?
It's good, but that's what I'm saying, if we don't take care of what we got, then we got all those people.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we still get comments about our park being one of the best parks in the area. It's surprising how many people come from all over and. It's surprising how many people come from all over, Mississippi, Canada, Oklahoma, Ashville, and those go over.
I'm not that kidding.
I, it is kidding. Thank you, sir. Please stay.
All right, Master City Council meeting's executive session is authorized by the Texas Government of Section five-five-one, about zero-seven, consultation with city attorney, update on alternative water project.
And just for the record, the other executive session is a typo, that was not meant to go there, we have no personal matters to discuss.